Good evening. It is Wednesday, September 23rd, 2020, and I am Nancy O’Kelly, President of the Rialto USD Board of Education. And I am calling this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. First item is an open session. Comments on closed session agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the closed session agenda will be granted three minutes.
We have none.
All right, can I have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved, Montez.
Can I have a second?
Martinez.
All right, as provided by law, the following are the items for discussion and consideration at the closed session of the board meeting. Public employee employment discipline dismissal, release, reassignment of employees, Government Code Section 54957. Student expulsions, reinstatements, expulsion enrollments. Conference with labor negotiators, agency designated representatives, Cloté Macavila, EDD; Superintendent Rhea McGyver Gibbs, EDD; Leave Personnel Agent, Personnel Services; and Rhonda Kramer, Leave Personnel Agent, Personnel Services. Employee organizations: California School Employees Association, Chapter 203; CSEA; Rialto Education Association, REA; and Communication Workers of America, CWA.
It’s cool. Okay guys, we’re back in live session. Give us a minute. We’re inviting Destiny Lopez and her family, who are here to witness her swearing in as this year’s student board member. So give us one second, but we are live, just so you know. We’re live, so come on in. But Nancy is going to be there. You will tell that Destiny will be right here. So give us a minute to open, and then we’ll...
I keep wanting to pull the microphone towards me. Yeah. For which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, report out of closed session. Do we have one Dr. Avila?
Yes, we do. We have two items. First one, the Board of Education accepted the request for an unpaid leave of absence for classified employee number 2904020, September 26th, 2020 through December 18th, 2020. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education took action to suspend certified employee number 2237520 without pay pursuant to Education Code Section 44939 and to authorize the administration to issue a 30-day notice of dismissal in accordance with Education Code Section 44... accordance with Education Code Section 44934 and direct the superintendent or designate to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Okay. All right, next, we come to adoption of the agenda. And I have a poll that I want to read before we do that. Business and financial consent item number E.4.6, agreement with Clay Counseling Foundation. We are pulling that item from the agenda tonight. Uh, okay.
Certified employee number 2237.
Hello. All right, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Walker, so moved.
Okay, can I have a second?
Martinez.
And vote for me, it's an aye for Ms. Walker.
Aye.
For Mr. Martinez.
Aye.
For Mr. Ayala.
Aye.
And Mr. Montes.
Aye.
Okay. And that brings us to presentations. And our first presentation is our 2020, 2021 student board member. So I have something I would like to share before we go ahead with the swearing in. Tonight, on behalf of the Board of Education, I am extremely proud to welcome Destiny Lopez as our incoming 2020, 2021 student board member of the Rialto Unified School District. Before I swear Destiny in, I wanted to share with the viewing audience some more information about Destiny. Destiny is a senior at Eisenhower High School. Woo! She comes from a family of six, her mother and father, two sisters, and one brother who live in the city of Rialto. She is a part of the ASB leadership team at Ike, as well as the captain of the cheer squad, member of Subobens, which is an all-girls honor society focused on community service. She is also a member of Medical Leaders of Tomorrow. Destiny wants to finish college and become a doctor. She said, "I am a strong, independent woman. I am focused and determined on reaching the goals I have set for myself. I plan on attending college and studying hard to achieve my dreams of becoming an OBGYN. When Destiny is education, I will swear you in, Destiny, and then during your board comments, you will have a chance to say some words." Okay? All right, will you want to come up here? Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you, Destiny Lopez, solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and of the State of California, and that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties about which you are about to enter?
I do.
Good. You don't have to repeat all that. Okay, with this oath, you are now seated officially as a student board member of the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education. Congratulations! We are so happy to have you. Okay, next presentation is the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan SB 98, the final review.
Well, good evening, Mrs. Kelly.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members and viewing audience. I hope you can hear me. My name's Kierel Mahachko. I'm academic agent for special programs. And I'm back this week to just review just a few highlights since our public hearing on September 9. And today, this is part of the consent agenda to locally approve our learning continuity and attendance plan. So just a very, very quick review. This plan came into being as a result of the trailer bill, Senate Bill 98. And basically, the verbiage in that bill has these bullets lined out that you can see on the screen of what we need to address in this plan. And there's several areas where these are divided. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of those areas and what we've included in the plan. A really important piece with this learning continuity attendance and attendance plan, as well as when we do regular work towards the LCAP, which is our Local Control Accountability Plan, that our timelines have been moved a bit due to our response to the pandemic. This is really the timeline that we had. This was actually signed into law at the very end of July. So we've had a pretty quick turnaround. And it's been important to actually meet with different stakeholders. And that includes our parents and community, our administrators, our classified staff, certificated staff, and also our students. So since September 9, we have actually had three additional parent meetings. One parent meeting was specifically some representatives of Day Pack and others representing the African-American community. Our plan, the draft, has been online with a Google form to give comments and feedback. And our final draft has been online since this past Monday. So I just wanted to highlight, you know, sometimes with stakeholders, we don't realize that they also include our students, but that's been important. And so we surveyed our students that are in grades four through 12, and we have right now approximately 4,500 responses. And we also did Google meetings with various groups, so small groups. So that's not always reflected in the number of meetings, but we met with administrators, teachers, and it's specifically stated in a lesson learned for distance learning. So we went through that data to make sure that we include, you know, some actions to address some concerns. We also have some preliminary survey results. The survey for our students will still be open, and we hope to use that information moving forward for our next LCAP. When we asked about how happy they are, and they were asked this question about the second week of August, and then with malware, it was a little bit delayed, but most of the students did have some time to respond. You can see, for the most part, they were happy with the time they had with their teacher. This next slide about help, well, we saw parents' perception that their student needed a lot of help, but students felt pretty confident, for the most part, almost 75%, 73.5% felt that they had just the amount of help that they currently needed. And technology, we know that's a key part of our distance learning. We have to have, there's several parts in the plan where we address how we're providing connectivity to families, how we make sure students have devices. So this just shows how they self-rate themselves on how difficult or easy it is to use these tools. So for the most part, the purple says very easy, and the dark kind of magenta is very difficult. And so you can kind of see, as we go counterclockwise, how the students rated themselves. So sample actions, we also, in this time, took the opportunity to work with San Bernardino County, and they gave a preliminary review of our plan to give us some feedback, to make sure that we're addressing all the tenants of SB 98. So I wanted to first talk about the funding sources and uses. And you will see these in the next couple of tables that will come after I go through these funding amounts. When we're talking about LCAP, we talk basically about our LCFF, our base funds. That's the largest source of funding and support, and basically, it meets our operational needs. We also, of that money, that local control funding formula, LCFF, there is supplemental concentration. That's the second-largest general fund pocket of money. And that really focuses on our unduplicated students that are lower socioeconomic, English learners, and foster McKenney-Vento. But with this plan, we are actually focusing on money that is falling under the umbrella of the CARES Act. So the district has received approximately $38 million to mitigate the learning loss as a result of distance learning. And some of these monies have, there's actually four specific pockets of it. The majority of this money, though, does have to be expended by December 31, 2020, which is a short timeline, and really is the focus on what we needed from mid-March 2020, when everything happened and we closed, the end of the 1920 school year, until December. So these funds cannot cover anything that was already in an existing budget, so it can't cover salaries or anything that, again, was previously purchased. And primarily, the district is using these funds to pay for additional instructional technology, different connectivity for our hotspots. We needed to order more of those instructional materials, tutoring, student software, and you can kind of see there. So it has created bigger gaps. So we have a specific section in the plan that is titled People Learning Loss, where we call out specific actions by different underserved student groups. So we have specific actions for African-American students, special ed students, English learners, foster youth. So this is an area where we're able to be specific. This is the data that we're going to use, and we're going to actually look at two years of diagnostic local data, because we don't have that dashboard at the state level. And each site is creating plans of action to address those students. So we're just running the data now through iReady for grades K-8 and be able to connect with the schools and those students that need additional support. When we either met with stakeholders or that we got feedback from the county on how to improve our plan, these are some specific ideas that they asked. So they wanted to also know specific strategies, because in our first draft, we kind of left it with a school side. So we went back and were more specific. And again, for those underserved students that I called out, we made sure we had specific strategies for them. They also wanted to know about our regular year, school year assessments, and how it relates to what we're doing. And then also, based on stakeholder feedback, we wanted to make sure that we had specific items in this section to address African-American students. And then I already touched upon about the language development. The law in particular asks us to monitor English Language Arts, Math, and ELD specifically. And that's not, you know, we have monitored ELD in the past, but they really want it part of this learning loss plan. And the next slide takes us to a screenshot. Again, not every single action has that line by line, but grouping those big-ticket items. And this just shows some of the things. For example, tutoring, you know, provided beyond the school day is in our budget. The special education have hired reading specialists to be working specifically with students that have issues with reading, learning disabilities. We also included in here our summer learning program that we provided for all students in entering third grade all the way through 12th grade. And then there are several programs with technology we've used to help to support learning, and those are included on there. So some of those names might look familiar to you of past contracts, the past couple of months, that we brought forward for board approval. And essentially, in a nutshell, that is my quick review of what we have for our LCP. And I'll open it up now if there's any questions.
Board, does anybody have any questions on the presentation?
President, oh, Kelly, this is Board Member Walker.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Walker.
My question is, for this new, for the project, the program that you're going to actually authorize, the impact from the meeting yesterday, have there been made changes based on the impact from the parents from the meeting last night?
Well, essentially, we haven't changed anything. This is the final draft that's been here. But basically, we shared with the parents
About feedback for the learning continuity and attendance plan. And so this was an opportunity for the public to see and the parents to see the financial piece that was not a part of the draft, part of this final document. And so, you know, I made a commitment to them that we would continue these actions and the feedback that they provided with our LCAP that is a continuous process for the remainder of the year.
Was there anything last night?
And Ms. Walker, I don't recall anything last night that was specific that needed to be added to or that could be added to this final draft that we had.
Ms. Walker, do you have an example of what parents were providing input about last night?
I'm not going to lift up the examples. If you're telling me that there were no, I'm going to go with that right now, because I'd have to pull up my records, and I don't have that available to me where I am now.
All right.
But let me just say this. Dr. McDuffie and the staff, two things. I think there needs to be very much clarity. The community has to have clarity on the interchanging use of the acronym LCAP, right?
Yes.
Because right now, there is a, this is like we're in an emergency state. There has been a use of the acronym LCAP to, for this new, the attendance plan, right?
Correct.
And people are thinking that it's a traditional LCAP, you know, our regular planning year-round and three-year renewal that happens. And so a lot of the confusion is, and a lot of frustration is, is that parents and community and educators too are thinking that this is the one and the same document, and wish, they're thinking that there was more time to have input on it and to work with the school, the school district to have input on the actual LCAP for the district. And so when this came about, and it's already September, and they're asking to be, have it ratified, and community is saying, wait a minute, we never had a chance to weigh in and have conversations, because the word LCAP is being interchanged, right? Because it is still just LCAP, but not understanding that these are two different types of documents.
Right. This LCAP deals only with COVID and the repercussions.
And it go, and it go, and it was shared, and it was kind of, it was shared in parent meetings, but we can keep repeating it, that basically, the LCAP timeline's been suspended. And this is just for our response to COVID. And the state did pick a plan acronym, same to LCAP. I mean, they call it the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. Most of the time, I abbreviated it like the state did as LCP. And they did that to not have confusion, but I still think it created confusion.
And Nina, as we discussed earlier, I will go ahead and make sure that the message is clear enough and provide additional opportunities, considering that this plan is also organic and that it's a piece of the larger LCAP that will continue to grow and make sure that we have the adequate parent input moving forward before December.
And Ms. Walker, I made that commitment to parents last night, that we would continue this conversation through our LCAP process, and that this would be something that is not a one-shot deal, but something that would be continuously a voice that comes out of these meetings that we have.
So thank you for doing that to the parents last night. Again, still, parents are still having concerns even after that meeting. I just want to make sure that, you know, while we're having conversations and we're doing our messaging around this, that we are making sure that we're deliberate about
Our students and families through these challenging times. This truly is a year to discover all of the strength that we have as a collective. To our Rialto managers, our annual RSMA membership drive has begun and has gone virtual. I hope you received the information launched, launching our two-week membership drive this past Monday, September 21, until Monday, October 5. Please join early. We want to continue to bring you staff development and networking opportunities, as well as scholarships for our members and students. If you have any questions, reach out to the Vice President of Membership, Tina Lingandfelter. Last spring, we held a very engaging event entitled Racism is a Public Health Crisis with over 100 managers in attendance. The discussion was a call to action. We promised at the time to continue the dialogue with a follow-up event. At this time, we would like to extend an invitation to all Rialto USD managers on October 29, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. for our Let's Stop Talking, Let's Take Action event. It will be hosted by RSMA board members who will facilitate and lead discussions on strategies and actions that we can begin implementing on our campuses. We look forward to continuing the work of supporting all students through an inclusive lens. Thank you and have a great evening.
Okay, thank you. And now it's time for comments from the superintendent.
And today, mine are very brief. Again, just want to thank the entire team, staff,
Again, just want to thank the entire team, staff, families, and students for their patience dealing with the pause in instruction, especially at the secondary level. But as of now, everybody is back on board, and I can't thank everyone enough for the patience and understanding as we encountered this very unfortunate experience. But also, again, to the staff and IT for working round the clock to do everything that they could within their powers to get us back on board. I know they've taken a lot of, I wouldn't say heat, but a lot of calls, because everybody wants to simply return to normal. And the things that IT has been doing have to be very methodical and have to be very calculated in order to get it right and getting us back online. And not only online for students, but also having our staff, whose computers were impacted, back in order to be able to perform their duties and responsibilities. So again, just a big thank you, big hug to everyone for hanging in there. We know that we're back on board, at least with instruction. Our staff is getting back on board one at a time, but soon enough, we'll be over this and be back on board with normal operations. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Avila. All right, now it's time for comments from members of the Board of Education. Let's start with Mr. Ayala.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. Good evening, staff and parents. Same message as before. Let's continue to be proactive, to save jobs and teach students, keep making this a priority. Kids learn best when they are guided. What we have now is, so, I haven't heard this yet, and I'm hoping that somebody comes forward and comes up with a resolution to save those jobs. Because remember, right now, in the state of California, not just the state of California, but in our country, you know, the revenue is down. It's going to take effect some way, some form. But if we're proactive now, we can minimize those problems down the road. Thank you, President O'Kelly, for an opportunity to share a few words with the community. Wish everybody the my best, and let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. I, Board, I made a faux pas, since this is the first time I've been back here in person, and I came in person to swear in Destiny Lopez, our new student board member. And she should have gone first when I turned to comment. So I'm now going to give Destiny a chance to speak.
I just wanted to say that I'm very, very happy to be, louder? Okay. Hi, my name is Destiny, and I'm very, very happy to be a part of the team, and I'm very happy to be here today and to be sworn in, and I'm super, super, super excited. And I cannot wait to listen in on all these very technical but very cool conversations. And I'm very happy to be the voice of my students. So thank you so, so much for including me and including my voice, so yay.
Thank you, Destiny, and we are very excited that you're here too. And trust me, most board meetings are a lot more exciting than this. Because we have nobody here. All right, we move on with Mr. Montes. Comments tonight?
Thank you, Board President, Ms. Nancy O'Kelly. I first would like to congratulate once again and congratulate Student Board Member Destiny Lopez and welcome her to Board of Education here. I think it's great that we have that representation from the student body at our school board meeting. You know, a lot of people don't know that many school districts still do not have student board members. And even our own district didn't always have that representation. So thank you, Destiny, for deciding to join us on the board, and congratulations once again, and a big congratulations to your family as well. I'm sure they're proud. I just, I don't have a whole lot for tonight. I just want to also thank IT for their awesome work, getting us back on track, getting us back on the road to less technical difficulties, and then also the staff who's been working hard to get the distance learning back up and running. I know there were some parents who were really concerned. They said, hey, one of the kids is going to start, you know, other distance learning again. So I'm glad that everything's back on track, and we're making progress slowly but surely. And just want to continue to ask that we really continue to be cautious, be careful, until we see a drastic change in the reduction of people being affected by COVID-19, until we see-
COVID forced us into the future of education. That mold is now broken. Change is uncomfortable, and we all look forward to returning to a semblance of normal, semblance of order as we knew it. Let's remember to keep the future, the virtual online learning, and remember that students each learn differently. Some excel in traditional learning, some have excelled in online learning. Some need help. We need to meet the needs of all students. We need to prepare them for their future American dream. So since we've already taken ground, been forced into the future of learning, of education, if you will, then we really should maintain that, not lose any ground. Now, when we do return back to traditional, then we can give the students their choice of learning in the way they learn the best. That way, everyone has a better chance at succeeding. And I'm saying, special ed, English learners, the underserved, all the way up to gate. We can't exclude anybody. We have to move everybody forward. Thank you, and everyone stay safe. Madam President, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Okay, we move on to Board Vice President, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. I want to first say to Dr. McDuffie and the team for the LCAP team, I did just get a chance to go back through my messages to make sure there was no specific example that was left on my messaging, and there was not, it was more venting. So if there were no, you know, request to add something, thank you for at least making sure that those parents were heard. I do definitely appreciate that and your diligence around following up from here on. But yeah, I was like, well, let me make sure there wasn't. So again, just, yeah, I was like, yeah, huh, didn't think about that. But again, thank you for your diligence on that and the follow-through and follow-up with the parents to make sure their voices are heard in our LCAP. The other thing is, again, this has just been a very, you know, unusual time for us all as parents, as, you know, board members, as community folk and staff, and just giving everybody kind of the patience, what we call space and grace, you know, giving them the space to do what they need to do in a difficult and different time, and then grateful we misstep or anything of that sort. And that is, you know, really what this is all about. It's a new day and time, and really understanding that it's not going to go back to what it was before, it'll never be the same, right? But thinking about how are we best, all of us, how are we going to best support our educational system to support our students? Because regardless, nobody is learning the same name, everybody's outcomes are going to be different, it's not all going to stay the same, whether their, you know, student outcomes are going to increase or decrease. And we have to figure out, how are we going to be the best players in this game to ensure the success of our students? And that's the big piece. We really just have to work together with the tools that are given us right now as well. So I just want to just say that because-
At the district level and at the school level, everyone has had to make such, everybody here is working so hard to make this all work, everyone. And I just marvel at the flexibility and adaptability of our teachers and our students and our classified staff to dealing with whatever life throws at them. Everybody has been doing an amazing job. So hang in there, better days are coming, and meantime, stay safe and enjoy. I see a lot of positive talk on the social media and things like that, and it just makes my heart feel good. So that's it for me. Good night and stay safe, and we're going to move on with the agenda now. The next item is to open public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the item on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any?
We have none.
Okay. And we need a motion to open public hearing. Motion to open public hearing. Anybody?
Don't everybody run at the same time.
Right, right.
Folks, don't move.
Thank you. All right, can I have a second on Mr. Montes' motion?
Walker, second.
Thank you. Vote by board members to open public hearing. For me, it's an aye. Ms. Walker? Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Forgot the mute button. Aye.
Okay. Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Montes? Okay, we are opening public hearing at 7:52 PM. And the item is D 1.1 Pupil Textbook and Instructional Materials Program. And they didn't write it out here, so we moved just to close it, even though I didn't read anything. Okay, then now I need a motion to close public hearing. Okay, a second?
Don't move, Montes.
Montes? And for me, it's aye. For Ms. Walker, it's a- Right, Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes? And we are closing public hearing at 7:53 PM. Next, it's a consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Martinez with-
Walker?
Second. Martinez with discussion on E 411.
Okay, so first, moved by Walker and second by Martinez.
Resources are there in order for us to provide this to them.
Okay, Ms., Madam President?
Yes.
I'd want to go ahead and make a motion to pass that and that Dr. Avila continue to look into adding the missing schools at 111,000, I believe it was. That way, we can pass that hopefully later. I don't want to exclude anyone.
I wonder, why is it that we can have all the other schools for 52,000, but we add three, and those three are going to be an additional 111,000? That doesn't sound right.
Does it? And I can follow up on that with the facade. Again, this is the grant that we were given by the state, and for us to be able to calculate for the three missing schools based on enrollment, so the numbers factor into this as well. So I'll have a full report for you this week.
Okay.
It probably also has to do with where do those three schools, which schools is it again?
It's Fitzgerald, Cordyac, and Trap, and it does have criteria, and it's likely that they didn't meet the criteria to be-
It's probably right.
Yeah, it's because those are, those schools are in an area, and the students that attend those schools come from a higher percentage of higher-earning families.
Correct. Right, right.
That's why those schools don't qualify for the grant. They have to qualify based on, based on the percentage of students who attend that their family household income.
Okay. Well, the motion was to approve all items except 4.11. And I need a vote by board members to approve the motion.
Ma'am?
Mr. Martinez made the motion, I made the second.
Um, yes, Madam President, it was to go ahead and approve-
Approve the item, okay.
In 411, and then have Fitzgerald, Trap, and Cordyac brought back at some later time, so we can add them if appropriate.
Okay, so we're approving it now, just approving the whole consent calendar. Everybody hear me? All right, so vote by board members. Mine is aye. Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Next, we move to discussion action items. Resolution number 20-21-05, a sufficiency of instructional materials. This would be with the Williams Act, I'm sure, right? Okay.
We have here the public hearing.
And resolution is in the back of the agenda, and it's just to basically saying that we are going to provide sufficient standards-aligned textbooks to all of our students. So-
And different viewpoints and opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Okay, so vote by board members. For me, it's an aye. For Ms. Walker? For Mr. Martinez?
Aye, with a recommendation to call it LCAP SB 98 for differentiation.
Yeah, something, right. That wasn't a real smart move on their part. Okay, Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes? Okay. And the third discussion action item is agreement with PF Vision Incorporated for inspection services for the expansion of the multipurpose room slash kitchen project at Myler High School. Can I have a motion to approve this item? And a second?
Walker, second.
Okay, and the item reads, "Approve an agreement with PF Vision Incorporated for inspection services for the expansion of the multipurpose room slash kitchen project at Myler High School from October 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, at a cost not to exceed $75,000 to be paid from Fund 21 Measure Y, Series C, General Obligation Bond." Any discussion? Okay, we want to go ahead and vote? For me, it's an aye. For Ms. Walker? For Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
For Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And for Mr. Montes? Okay, adjournment. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on October 7th, 2020 at 7 o'clock PM, telephonically and via streamlined only. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the board meeting are available upon request from the superintendent's office. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? Our student board member.
Excellent.
Okay. And is there a second? All right, vote by board members to adjourn. For me, it's an aye. For Ms. Walker? For Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
For Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
And Ms. Lopez? Aye, okay. Aye, okay. And the time we are adjourning is 8:04 PM. Everybody stay safe and have a good night, and hopefully we'll see each other soon.